Okay, good evening and welcome to the February 22nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, moment of silence. We have action items, consideration and possible action on accepting the donation to the Sturbridge Fire Department, consideration and possible action on a special permit for bass fishing on Big Alum, consideration and possible action to award a contractor for library window restoration, North Cemetery Building rehabilitation, consideration and possible, excuse me, action on application for common victuella license for 413 Main Street, consideration and possible action on badges being issued for Hawker and Pedler licenses, consideration and possible action of change of manager for McCallmay Inc., from Nicole Alicia to Christopher Brunel, old business, new business, correspondence, Citizens Forum, executive session, then we will adjourn. Public service announcement. Jamie?
None.
Mary?
I just want to remind residents that we have free rapid tests that the town has purchased, and you can get yours at either the senior center or the library during their regular hours. And I believe every resident can get four, so there's still plenty left, although I'm told about half are gone. So if you would like some free rapid tests, now would be the time to go.
Hey, Chase?
I just wanted to let all the residents know that tomorrow night at 6:00, we will be having the Town Administrator Search Open Forum, where you can come and say what you would like and the new town administrator, what qualities you're looking for, and that starts at 6:00.
Right here in Town Hall. Hey, Ian?
I have none.
I just have a reminder that there's a public hearing on the proposed Burgess Elementary School budget for 2022, 2023, be held on Thursday, March 3rd, at 6:30 PM in the cafeteria at Burgess Elementary School. The regular school committee meeting will begin at 6:00.
We have an, you have one?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we just have an extra? Okay, we just have an extra one.
Oh, it was the way it was set up.
I didn't, I didn't know if anyone was missing one. No, we're good.
Okay, could we please have a moment of silence for those affected by COVID? Okay, thank you. Okay, action item A, consideration and possible action on accepting a donation to the Sturbridge Fire Department in the amount of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskdale. Any questions, comments? Someone want to make a motion?
I will move to accept the donation to the Sturbridge Fire Department from the Federated Church with gratitude.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? The next consideration and possible action on a special use permit for bass fishing on Alum Pond. Okay, now, there's been some talk about this. Town of Sturbridge manages the boat ramp. We have, in the past, other than the past two years because of COVID, have had requests for bass fishing. There's never been problems. At one time, one person was concerned that they were going to be there too early, but that never transpired, and it never happened. We've had nothing but good comments about it, and it is scheduled for March 26, 2022. The arrival time will be 6:00 AM. Start time is 7:00 AM. The return time is 3:00. There'll be eight boats. Okay, I believe this is the same contact we've had in the past. Anyone have any questions?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I don't, you go first, I'll wait.
I just know that today I spoke with some people online, and their big concern was the transmission of weeds and other things from other ponds into our pond. I didn't know if there was anything we can put in place to mitigate that.
Well, we've never really.
I know there's state laws that say you should rent your boat, you should rent your trailer, and...
Usually groups like this are really concerned about that. They're probably more careful than anyone else, and this is really no different than if eight citizens from Sturbridge or eight citizens from Southbridge showed up with their boats and put them in. So that, you know, it's, we don't have any rules and regulations. The Big Alum Lake Association could probably get together if they have concerns on things and come up with suggestions, because the Board of Selectmen as harbor masters, we can initiate rules and regulations. Mary?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in, similar to what Ian said. I am the representative on Slack. I really, you know, I operate a little more like liaison, because I really haven't, I think the meetings are, really benefit them. I don't know what direct impact we have all the time, but I am on the email, and they do have concern with, with, you know, the boats bringing in, you know, weeds from other town, from other, excuse me, ponds and lakes. And as a town, we should also have that concern, because we help pay for weed control, you know, at town meeting. So I don't know, maybe our motion can simply say, you know, with the understanding that they clean their boat prior to entry into the...
We could, I mean, I'm sure they would, but we could...
No, I know, but I mean, sometimes when they're directed to do so, that they might be more apt to be willing to do it, you know?
I see no problem with that, but, you know, the Slack and Big Alum or any other lake, they should really get together then and work on these concerns and maybe come up with some solutions, and, you know, we can go from there, but...
Because I know when we log, you know, we say, you know, nothing, we say the hours, we say, you know, dusk, you have to be done, or, you know, with logging permits, we could just, it could be boilerplate that we...
It's a great pond, and it has to be open to the general public for fishing and boating. There's restrictions, I know, on Quabon, because that's a water source.
Water supply.
But we could certainly do that. Any other questions from the board?
Someone in the audience is looking at you, someone in the audience is...
This is actually a public hearing, which means you can attend the meeting. It, I mean, it's a public meeting, you can attend, it's not a public hearing. At a public hearing, you have a right to speak. I will take one question from you, sir. My prerogative, I can say that. Yes, it's for the audience at home, not us.
My name is Bruce Grand.
Oh, can you speak into the mic so the people at home can hear you, please?
My name is Bruce Grand, 136 Lake Road on Big Alum. I'm also on Slack with Mary as one of these, and with Lee, that we have been doing a lot of research, we're doing a lot of work with it, getting things cleaned up. The weeds are one of the biggest things that we have to deal with. Big Alum Lake has had tremendous fallback on the quality of the water, the quarter of the weeds, and it's the amount of boats that came in to the lake, and they have the right to be on there, I'm not arguing that part of it, but they don't, most of those individuals don't understand that the weeds attach to their trailers, to their motors, and they get in the lake, we expand. We've actually been having more problems over the last three years than what we've ever had before. My concern with on this, with the pa, with the bass fishing, was are, can the participants, the eight boats, do a good look? I mean, the advantage they're going to have is they're just coming out of winter time, and most, if, if their, boats have been in the driveway or set up, then there's not a problem. Nothing is going to get in the lake. But if they have used it anywhere within a three to a seven day time period, they carry these things into the lake. And my job is, I, I'm, I'm the environmental chair for Big Alum Lake, and I know that you'll have the same speaking from Walker, from all the other ones that have it on there. We're not saying, don't come fishing here, we're not saying, don't do anything here. We just want them to make sure they're doing everything they can on their own to make sure their boats are clean of it. The only place where you can get it done is at Quabon Reservoir, and that's run by the FDA, or, yeah, the FDA. DPW, not even that, but they, it's, it's, it's really become a big thorn, and they don't want it quabbing, quabbing, they can do it. We've tried to expand. We wanted to be able to go to the town ramp here. The ramp here is owned by the, the state of Massachusetts, it is not a town property. And we want to go in, and they say, get off the property, you don't have any right to say anything to anybody. They're not worried about the weeds, we are. We're paying the bills, and, and I just want that to be known. That's my only reason for asking questions about this fishing, bass tournament, is can they please look around, look at their trailers, look at what they're going to be putting in the lake, and say, I feel good that I'm not going to leave anything here.
Yeah, well, as Mary said, we could put that in the permit, and they will look closely at it. But I truly believe, as I said before, that the lakes ought to come up with some rules and regulations. I know different places have no high-speed boats, certain hours, and different things. So if the lake associations came up with things, we could do it, you know, as harbor masters. Also, the state may own the ramp, but the town manages the ramp, it's up to us. And I know the weeds are a big problem. Last year or the year before, the town voted money for Quacum Quocet because of the weeds and everything, so, you know, we have...
But that's what Slack has been doing, is we've been working with the town, coming up with the rules and the regulations, and this has been part of it, is being open, get the information around to everybody, and get it completed. But you're going to lose if we don't do it right, and we don't get control of what's here in the lake. Anybody that wants to go for a boat ride, I'd be more than glad to show you what the problems are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else on the board have a question? Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit for bass fishing on Alum Pond for 32622, with the caveat that we ask the participants to clean their boats as well as they can.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? You know, a simple start with the lake association. At Big Alum, maybe you could ask the town permission to just put up a sign reminding the people, check their boats.
Is there not a sign at the boat ramp already? Okay, yeah, because generally, any boat ramp has that standard mass water department, you know?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And your post here, it's on the board that's there.
Okay.
And we also post any treatments are on that same board in four different places just there, and then I put them all over the roads, all over the place when we're doing the treatment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know we're not supposed to engage after a question. What do other lakes do to enforce, because, I mean, most lakes and ponds would have that rule, that they want the boats clean, so no contamination comes in. Other than putting up a sign, what do, you know, how is that enforced? Do lake associations try to get the authority to, to man it, you know, on a Saturday and check boats, or, I don't, I don't know, I'm asking?
Yeah, we've tried to do that. We did that down in Connecticut. I mean, I've been up here on this lake.
Okay, sir, the mic.
Sorry, I'm the one who asked the question, so...
The people at home.
I keep forgetting, because we can hear.
Yeah. I, I mean, I was born and raised on this lake.
I've been here, I'm 72 years old, I've been here for 72 years. My family bought here in the early 40s, and we've been on it, we, this is, my heart and soul is here at the lake and staying involved in it. And we've always tried to get it to stay clean, work clean, and working hard to get it done. Slack has given us another way to be able to do some of these things and get it incorporated. State of Connecticut welcomed the volunteers with open arms and had them work directly with their DP, or their Environmental Protection. And we worked, they showed us how to do it, we would go look at the trailers, show the owner. We didn't clean it, they did. We tried to do it one time, four years ago, at the boat ramp here, and the EPA came, get out of here, you have no right to be here, this is our property, this is ours. And all we were trying to talk to them, can we at least clean the trailers? The only place you can take a trailer or a boat is into Quabon, and that's it. You can't have just one in the state and have that handle every one of the boats or fishermen that are out there. This is really serious with the amount of weeds. It's getting really bad. So, we would love to do that, we'd be more than glad to be there and put out a tarp, go around, show them how to clean their trailers and get it done, but we're not given an opportunity, so we've got to find other ways to get it done.
Well, maybe if, you know, that suggestion was written up and came to the board here, we could maybe be an intermediary with the state on that.
Yep. We, I think we've got a great platform with Slack to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Yep.
Did we both?
Yeah. Okay. It took, it took me a minute to remember.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action to award contractor for each of the following projects. Robin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I have for you two projects. One is to award the contractor for the library window restoration project. We opened the bids on January 28th, we actually had tied bids for low bidder, so we did a second heat, which is what the state allows you to do to break the tie. Larochelle Construction for $22,400 has come in as the low bidder, which is under our budget, so we are recommending approval of the contract.
Okay, questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
Sure. I will move to authorize the chair to execute the contract with Larochelle Construction Incorporated for $22,400 for the window restoration at the Joshua Hyde Library.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
And next, we have a contractor for the North Cemetery Building Rehabilitation Project. We also opened bids for this one on January 28th, however, the lowest bid was over budget by $5,140. On Thursday night, the finance committee approved a transfer for $5,140 to be added, so we now have exactly enough funds to award F&amp;N Contractors the contract for restoration rehabilitation of the cemetery building.
Okay, so you would like a motion?
Yes, I'd like a motion to approve the contract, please.
What do we, what do we utilize the building for?
The building is the, basically the caretaking building for the cemetery operations. DPW houses their lawn mowers, plywood for covering the holes and things like that for services offered with the cemetery plots and the cemetery care.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the chair authorize the contract with F&amp;N Contractors LLC for $35,140.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Robin.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Stay dry.
Not going to happen.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on an application for common victuella license for 3, uh, 413 Main Street. Julia?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? Hello.
Do you want to just tell us a little bit about where it is and what you're doing?
Absolutely, so 413 Main Street was previously Johnny D's ice cream and sandwich shop. We are seeking to convert that space into a catering tasting room and also a fine cheese and charcuterie shop for the town of Sturbridge. We are not currently pursuing a liquor license for the space, but I would like to add that on for catering clients not to be consumed on site presently.
Okay, would you say that last part again?
Absolutely, so I'm not currently seeking liquor license, but I would like to add that on for catering clients, but not liquor to be consumed on site presently.
Okay, so you'd have to fill out an application?
Correct.
Okay, so this is just for the common victuella? Any questions or comments?
I think it's a great business to bring to Sturbridge.
Thank you.
I wish you a lot of luck.
We're excited for it.
Of course, you're asking till 11:00?
I put that in there now...
Well, better safe than sorry, I mean, it doesn't mean you have to...
Exactly.
Yeah, you don't have to stay open.
I'm a mother of a one and a half year old, so I can get as much sleep as possible. Yeah, that's a little late.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Sure. I will move to approve the common victuella license for 413 on Main, with the hours and other details listed in the license application itself.
Right, yeah, Sunday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
There it is, I was looking for, oh, there it is. Sunday to Saturday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
When are you hoping to open?
Hoping for the end of April, early May.
Time for Mother's Day and...
Fingers crossed.
Wedding season.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay. E, consideration and possible action on badges being issued for Hawker and Pedler Years ago, when the board approved Hawkers and Pedlers licenses, the person always got a tag and wore it. That way, the people who answer their door know exactly what this person is there for. I know in the past, when they used to do it, I would have a couple people knock at my door, and they wouldn't have a badge, and I'd say, you know, you need a badge, especially this day and age, you never know who's there. Any ideas?
I know, yeah, I was going to say, I know some towns have you pick it up in the morning, right? And you pick it up, and then you drop it back off when you check out, and it seems good for people, too. At least you know they're registered.
I've checked into a few.
It's a great idea, they could put it on a lanyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, as long as it doesn't symbolize, you know, doesn't look like a police badge, I think.
I want one, I want one.
Chase learned that the hard way.
Okay, so the board's in agreement, we should move along with this?
Yeah.
Yes, thanks.
Makes sense.
Our office or would the police department issue that?
It's usually the police department.
Well, we have to approve the license.
Oh, yeah, I mean...
That still comes here, then they can get, pick it up?
Yeah, they know, because...
That's what I was going to ask.
They've already checked. Okay, F, consideration and possible action of change of manager application for Nicklemay Inc., from Nicole Alicia to Christopher Brunel. Okay, you can sit or stand, Mr. Brunel.
I'm Christopher.
Okay, you want to just give us a little background on you?
So as the, as the legal owner of the business, I've decided to put myself on the license. It's just a permanent thing. We wish the Commonwealth would allow more than one person on the license, but as of right now, they really don't. So it was just a business decision I made to put myself on the license.
Okay, and are you tip certified?
Yes, I am.
Okay, questions from the board? Comments?
Is Nicole still on it, or you're going to be the only one on it?
You're only allowed to have one.
Oh, that's right, okay, so just, she's not here, too, but she's obviously on board.
What's that?
She's, she also agrees for the change of manager.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Motion?
I'll make a motion to change the manager and application for Nicklemay Inc., from Nicole Alicia to Christopher Brunel.
Is there a second?
One second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
Okay, old business, mask mandate.
I, I'll jump in, I, I think with the last couple weeks, a lot's changed, state to state, and I think the numbers are looking good, so I personally am in favor of removing the mask mandate.
I'll jump in, because I've been the one that's proposing it. I, I agree with Chase now, I mean, I'm comfortable that it's, you know, the surge we had after Christmas and New Year's is down, and our positivity rate's down, but I think that it's, it's fluid, so if the numbers start, you know...
Well, we always have that option.
Climbing, we can go back. I didn't know how, so I was prepared to also not extend it, but I didn't know if we, in the past, we've had a sign that says, recommended for the unvaccinated. Do we want to go back to that recommendation, or...
I think the unvaccinated has to, is mandated to wear masks.
Are they still? I thought that was lifted, too.
I was going to suggest to retain the signage saying that it was recommended just in general.
Yeah.
That we just retain the signage?
Distinguish.
And you say recommended in general, and then, you know, people do what they may, and that's kind of, as Worcester's backed down, they've kind of continued to have signage that says strongly recommended, but not required.
And that's, that's what we did before.
Yep.
So...
We must still have the signs around.
I'll make a motion that we, oh, do you want to do it, J? J, go ahead.
I make a motion that we remove the mask mandate from the town buildings and put the sign up that says, mask strongly recommended.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Go ahead, no, you, Mary, no, I think it's better coming from you, because you brought it up first, so, yeah.
I'll second to it.
There you go.
Any discussion?
I got nothing, everybody...
All in favor?
Effective immediately, right now.
Yep.
So I was kind of secretly hoping that we moved that up, and then we could have...
Breathe easy.
Yeah, but it was at the end.
It was a short meeting, so...
It was at the end, so I said, okay.
Okay, Ian, any other old business?
I have none.
Chase?
I have no.
Mary?
No.
Jamie?
None.
And I have none. New business? Jamie?
I have a new business, but no new business.
That's right.
No, I don't have anything.
I don't think everybody gets it.
That's all right, they're not missing much.
Okay, Mary, any new business?
No.
Chase?
No, no.
No.
I received an email from Klaus Hochfeld.
Yes, I think we all did.
So, I know the Board of Selectmen doesn't have any funds to do it, but I told him he should approach, approach the Sturbridge Terrorist Association and the, what's the other committee?
Edelman Committee.
No, not Edelman.
Oh, Special Events.
Special Events, so, he said he didn't know about that, so...
I also told him, the STA, and also, I think last year, I told him that, because he said... And also, I think last year, I told him that, because he said some of the funds, some of the costs were offset, the police, oh, the police, the monitoring was offset by the Betterment Committee, because the Betterment Committee has overtime funds, and I think that they supported it last time, so I said to go back to the Betterment Committee.
Yeah, it's already passed.
Yeah, the $10,000.
Yeah.
But I think last year, they gave a portion of that to that race, because he mentioned in the email it was offset, and I thought it was offset by...
It was strange the way it was, that part was written, but...
So he said he wasn't at that point yet, but I also pointed, because the STA really has the biggest budget. Special Events has a budget of $6,000, and the STA has community support for events, and they pretty much, you know, the Harvest Fest, there's a few things, but this would be right up their alley, really.
Oh, yeah, well, and Klaus is a worker. I'm sure he'll follow through. Okay, no other new business? Anyone have correspondence?
Two things I wanted to bring up, actually, two things since your, the warrant, the warrant, the agenda was posted. Very unfortunate news about two key employees who are going to be departing. I mentioned while he's here, before he leaves, our town accountant, Chris, has given us notice. His last day will be March 4th. Unfortunately, he's under pressure from his employers to be there for the beginning of an audit, so I know he would have liked to have given us a lot more notice, but it doesn't sound like he had much choice.
Okay, Bob, I don't think they're picking you up.
I'm sorry. And so Barbara and I have been discussing the next steps. Barbara's been very proactive. We reviewed an ad to be posted and published. With two weeks, well, we're not going to be able to have anybody in two weeks to fill in, so we've been discussing options, whether it's an individual or a firm. I think we're obviously trying to clear up as much as possible with all the ongoing projects that we have. It may be necessary to bring Chris back for a while to help us out with some of the different things that are going on now, FEMA reimbursements, et cetera, et cetera. But we're trying to move forward as quickly as possible, and with the recruitment and bringing in a replacement, a good town accountant. I think one thing that we have also discussed, which may be necessary, is what unfortunate position you often find yourself in when someone leaves. I mean, we have reached out to one or two recruitment firms, and this, similar to the town administrator, is going to be a very difficult field to find someone, and there may be some pressure to increase the salary. But I think that's something that we can discuss at a future meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that in order to be competitive, that might be something that we have to consider.
I know. Can I just jump into? I talked to Chris earlier to let him know what a big loss it is, because I think he's done a fantastic job.
Yes.
And he did indicate that he would help us out with the transition any way he could, so that's good news. I think it's unfortunate when we lose somebody good, where then we, and I'm not saying this is why, this is a different opportunity for, but I think it's unfortunate when we lose somebody really good, and then we know we have to increase our salary in order to be marketable, which I get. And I think sometimes I feel badly for the people who have been in that position, and then we increase it for somebody new coming in where it wasn't already where it needed to be, because we just, you weren't here, obviously, Bob, but we just had this major study, and we brought in a firm, and, you know, we paid quite a bit of money for it, and they reevaluated all the positions in all the departments, made recommendations, and I know the town accountant was one where I and a few others, and we all agreed, told them to go back and look at it again, because it was lower, and then they ended up increasing it. And I'm not saying that's why Chris is leaving, it's not, but I just, you know, when we hear that now we're going to increase it, I just think that that's very unfortunate, that we weren't just paying, especially when we just had this firm. Look at all these comparable towns. I was thinking that if we were where we should have been, then that firm should have recommended, you know, a certain salary. Like, it just happened a year ago, literally a year ago.
Was this a year ago?
Yeah, just a year ago, and we reevaluate every single position. So I would think that we should be finding somebody about what we're paying our current town accountant, if that firm, you know, did the kind of job that, you know...
I think unfortunately, going off historical data, they probably made a good recommendation, but the world is a different place than it was. You know, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's...
Yeah, you can't, you can't. It's so hard to compare anything two years ago.
I'm not saying that now we're going to probably advertise it for hire, and we're losing somebody really good in the process, so.
It's going on in private industry. You see it everywhere. People are, you know, they're jumping ship and going other places, because they can go get a big money grab now, so hopefully it's not a...
A lot of sign-on bonuses, I noticed.
And the second?
Yeah, they only knew about one, two.
Butch?
Butch?
Oh, I didn't...
Butch?
When did that come in?
Today.
Yeah, it just came in today. He's given his three months' notice, so he'll be working until June 1st. Now, which is another...
He's retiring, though, so.
Yeah, well, he had mentioned, apparently, when he started, he had made a three-year commitment, and this will be his three years.
It'll take yesterday for him, I think.
I'm going to go to his father's house and get him talked out of it.
Yeah.
Now, the charter allows, or specifies, that the town administrator appoints a five-member search committee. Butch happened to be in Barbara's office earlier today, have some potential candidates for that. I don't know how the board feels about that. I mean, there's been a posting for other search committees. I'm not sure it's necessary in the interest of time to have one here. I think we can find the candidates to be appointed to the search committee and to move this along.
Well, how many candidates do you already have for it?
I haven't spoken to anyone directly yet, but the charter calls for five. But it's the board's pleasure. I mean, I think, I believe that I can fill out the committee without a posting or a, you know, recruitment period for the recruitment group for the search committee.
Well, we could have a short recruitment period. I'd like to see a opening post, just...
So people can have some say. I agree.
Till your next meeting?
Yeah.
That's maybe a good thing for the Charter Review Committee to look at, too. Some of those positions maybe don't need that in the future.
Never hurts to look.
Nope. Certain positions, you know, might be better.
Yeah, there's only three positions that are set up that way. Police chief, fire chief, and DPW director.
And town administrator, right?
Well, yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Those, the town administrator picks the committee. We pick the town administrator. I'll settle on that. Anything else, Bob?
That's all I have. I think you're probably thinking that's enough. I'll try to have good news at the next meeting.
Yeah, I missed Butch's. I don't know how I missed that one.
That's a real loss.
Okay, Citizens Forum? It's nice to see your faces.
Yours, huh?
Would have put lipstick on.
You do?
Okay, executive session? Jase, do you have?
Yep. Per MGL, C30A, Section 21, "To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel."
Okay, and the chair so declares? Okay, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Jamie, how do you vote?
I vote in favor, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we will not reconvene in open session. If the house is clear, we can stay here.